Good evening. We'll now begin the recording of a regular monthly meeting. The board being present, a meeting was called order six twenty-nine. And tonight we immediately convened an executive session to discuss the medical and sporting industry particular persons and matters leading to the employment and dismissal of particular persons. At this time, I'd like to call for motion. And second, to end the executive session and return to the session. Mr. Webanero and Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes opposed?
I'm a Republican Legion, 22A, United States of America, and to repolish the British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Votes? Ms. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Roswell-Athens?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda as written. Motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes opposed? Motion carried. And motion to approve the minutes of March twelfth and March twenty-sixth and March twenty-eighth, as written or corrected. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Second, Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes opposed? Motion carried. And, and don't, is there anybody in Congress who can see anything? I don't know.
No, I can't.
Okay. On to superintendents.
Welcome, everybody. I'm Terry Fairwell from Solar Eclipse, and, which was pretty cool, by the way. I'd like to welcome Terry Calabrese Gray as our interim assistant superintendent for the position of junior deputy. I did have a chance to speak with Shannon, too, and she's in pretty good spirits. Going through a lot, in pretty good spirits, so we wish her the best. Over break, I think that someone was looking over my shoulder, making sure I was successful with this one when we made the plan to do our building project, a mini building project, student services. We made it just in time with the day off, so they did the abatement of the floor over break, over, over our break, and the testing, air quality testing came back in at two o'clock, right around, just about time for the Solar Eclipse, so I'm glad we had that day off, is all I'm saying. There were good progress being made there. I know Matt and Shannon met about colors and things like that for walls, so they'll be starting the painting there and figuring by next week that we can carpet in, so we're hoping we'll be able to do it relatively quickly there. So, it looks pretty barren in there, and there's a lot, there was a lot of layers. We're happy to report that it's all gone, and I think it was the, just the slight smell, residual smell of the cleaner that had been used to break up the glue that was holding that, so, the ties. Those are really the things from my report.
PAT?
I'm here for Brian.
Okay.
PAT would like to thank Mr. Storm from the board for granting the use of our emergency day, so all staff could safely spend time enjoying the eclipse yesterday, so we did appreciate that. We'd also like to acknowledge Scott for his personalized empathy during each of the potential RIF meetings. Each of the potential people did say, spoke very highly of your kindness, so we very much appreciate that, too. We are also hopeful that the bill handed to the state assembly and senate will dissolve the PPR, lead to a positive change in our district selected teacher evaluation system if it passes, so we look forward to that negotiations. And we also would like to welcome Terry Calabrese Gray as our interim assistant superintendent.
Thank you. Is that agenda? Reports, communications, any questions on that? A motion to approve A three Y.
Motion.
Motion, heard over here, Mr. Peters, second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes opposed? Motion carried. A new business. Any questions, communication on that?
Can you see the first reading of the field trip?
Yes.
Policy there. One of the, one of the areas of the field trip policy that we feel maybe is not as consistent as it needed to be was when we have athletes going away, we are, we kind of do a blanket statement, not even approving their approval on that trip, because we don't always know. But then when we have a field trip, for example, that's going to go out of town on Friday, the board doesn't even know, but on a Saturday we do, and I think that we could do a little bit, do a better job of giving you information in a, in a place possibly, Cherry, they were talking about it in, in board docs, if there were a question that came up for you, and then we wouldn't have to have all these approvals of field trips. And it always seems like we're at that wire, the field trip's happening at this particular time, or it would just make better sense to have it. If you were curious to where a particular group was going, you could check, they have a specific location, so you'll see the one change that made to the, to the policy. Tonight's only the first reading, so if you take a look at that, we'll, we'll be discussing it more next time.
And I think it's, thank you all, it's a nice, not a cloud, yeah, probably out here, that students' names are some of the organizations.
Good point, because there are times where our groups are small enough that the names are easy to figure out, and we, as, we wouldn't want to be sharing that across social media to, that they're, for example, a small group went to New York City or something like that. So, this way, who's a board member could see if you really needed, be curious to where a group was going, but we wouldn't be doing this approval. We, fortunately, after everything we did, we chartered buses this past year. All those protocols are in place, so that we're, we have very, you'll see in that policy, that the principal and/or leader that's going on the field trip has to do, it's just one, one less piece that you'll have to bring, bring back to them.
Huge thank you to Stuart's for that holiday match program again, who had, that seven fifty, it's a nice map. And I did ask out earlier today, I noticed that all of our AEDs had to be replaced. Wow, there were a number of them.
Yes, we had quite a few AEDs that needed to be replaced. That's the only drawback when regulations come through, when you have to buy all of them at one time, you have to get rid of them closely at the same time. So, we, we did have a large piece of that that we had to get rid of. Do you remember the cost of that?
Yeah, so it's gone down, when they first came out, it was like twenty-five hundred dollars.
But the good news is, all new AEDs with proper, proper everything are in marketplace.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, motion to approve new business A three B.
Motion.
Motion, Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, personnel. Any questions, comments? Motion to approve personnel A three G. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Graves? All in favor?
Aye.
And, now to do seven. We should look at each one of these individually, Cherry?
Yes.
Seven, new business. Policy workshop, there's a policy workshop that's virtual on, on May eighth. Cherry signed me up already, I don't know if anybody else was interested. So we need approval to allow me to visit to the live virtual policy workshop. Is it a morning?
Do you have time?
I think it's eight thirty twelve, or eight thirty, eleven thirty, something like that.
Can I sign up as well?
Okay. So, motion to sign up, have Mr. Webanero and Mrs. Berry participate in a live virtual policy workshop on May eighth. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
It's eight thirty to eleven forty-five.
Yeah. Position creation, to create a full-time co-position, if I can, remainder of school year. Any questions, comments? A motion to approve that position creation. Mr. Webanero and Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes opposed? Motion carried. Also, motion to approve the application for refund of credit of rural property taxes here. So, motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Graves, second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And then, a motion to have a position conversion of two five-by-five kids service helpers to one seventy-five kids service helper. Any questions? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes opposed? Motion carried. Bosie's budget, we have to set a time for Thursday, April eighteenth, for a special meeting. To hope on that, if you've gone through, or if you haven't had a chance to look through all one hundred and four pages, it's very interesting, some of the increases in price, because they are converting some of the rooms to TAs, there are one TA to three TAs, sizable cost increase, which we had in the budget, which Mrs. Rabbit would forewarn us of. So, April eighteen is a Thursday morning, usually on a Thursday morning, one time, name available, okay? Should I teach that, eh? Okay.
Now you go.
Sure. Seven thirty-ish?
Yeah.
Seven thirty, like we usually do?
Yeah.
Seven thirty, okay. Okay, a motion to set the, the time for Bosie's special, Bosie's budget, that's seven thirty, April eighteen. Motion, or motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
For that day, we will be in the high school library.
High school library?
For that day. High school library for that day.
High school library, April eighteen, so. And could we come, just to make sure we have more free time?
I'll try, I'll try.
Okay, as long as we've got, that's all. Give me up. Just checking. You do it in the evening. Whole unfinished business, this is our field trip, revised policy.
I jumped out of, out of the line.
Yeah, you did.
I seem to do that a lot of the time.
So, all we have to do is, we have a first reading, do we have to do an action?
Not necessarily.
No, until the second reading, great. Okay, unfinished business, now to the budget development, right?
Thank you, everyone. Today's presentation is finalizing and setting the purpose of the twenty-four twenty-five budget. So, we review our agenda, we review our objectives, the timeline, our proposed budget parameters, our base budget, proposals and reductions which have been revised since the March twenty-eighth meeting, and balancing revenues and expenditures which has been revised. So, the objective for our meeting is to establish the dollar amount for the twenty-four twenty-five budget, to agenda item number AC. This involves approving budget proposals and reductions and determining the funding of the house. So, again, I will review the budget development timetable, we may be at the end this evening, otherwise we will, we have a tentative budget workshop scheduled for April eleventh, that's six o'clock PM. So, important budget dates and deadlines, the New York State budget has not been approved yet, the deadline was extended from April first through at least April eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. So, we do not have a budget to operate on right now. May fourteenth is the budget hearing, and May twenty-first is the budget vote. So, our proposed budget parameters, which the board has approved, is applying necessary fund balance towards the twenty-four, twenty-five for the budget to sustain programming and the rest necessary for type expenditures. The general direction and strategy is to maintain programming with only necessary enhancements or reductions, and evaluate which programs should be continued and which should be eliminated that were previously funded using COVID- nineteen relief grants. Our tax levy increase is at the tax gap of two point eight four percent, and the foundation aid assumption, given that we don't have a New York State budget at this point in time, is the New York State Executive Proposal amount.
And what information has come through, MISMA and so on, governor and legislators, the governor's not one to touch on the foundation aid issue, right? This is the amount that we received last year?
This is more than the.
More than last year.
The base operating expenditure budget for twenty-four, twenty-five prior to twenty-eight enhancements or reductions is fifty-four million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, fifty-one dollars, which represents a two point eight percent increase over the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. As you can see, when we have, when we use our base budget and the assumptions of the New York State Executive Proposal, we do have a revenue gap, which means proposed revenue and expenditures of about four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So, now we will review the proposals and reductions that we have discussed previously.
Sure. So, as we talked about just before break, the district leadership team did a lot of work looking over proposals, looking at over, not only what we needed to cut, but also things we need to put into place to make Purdue successful. Principals and the leadership team and I worked through that, and one of the areas was the associate principal for the elementary school, that was an enhancement. PM school, which we discussed last time as well, was an area we feel is absolutely necessary moving forward each year. Also, the social worker position, we feel is critical. Elementary counseling position, that was a moving position, we were also thinking that is critical that we have in there. And then we also talked about the construction grants coordinator, and then one of the areas that the board asked us to look at that particular number, we had it, the entire amount of that sound, after looking at what we can take from different grades, we were able to bring that number down, add as a revision to this particular page. A custodial worker, a half-time custodial worker, and then we also had the HBAC maintenance budget line of two thousand. So, those were the recommend, what we recommended to the Board of Education as proposals allocated, those are the things we feel we need to make, to keep doing business in a way that's sustainable. We also talked about, there was questions, you know, we're talking about those different positions, what was the associate principal for the elementary school, and we did do some research on what other schools are, where they are, and what they're, what they're doing for that particular position. So, the box underneath the first one is what other schools in the area do, others are similar to our size, you can see, we've got about Vermont Elementary, Big Quinton Elementary, Concord with Ed, they got deans of students and associate principals. And I also did a comparison between associate principal and the amount of money it would cost us for associate principal to a dean of students, and you can see just about that, where the associate principal's an eleven, can be considered an eleven-month position, and the dean of students would be considered a ten-month position. Additionally, we looked over our grants, and something came up with a number, and that was a major part of our discussion last time we were here, in regards to the movement of money from grants to cover the salary of the grants coordinator. That was what we had prepared last time, and for better clarification to this particular position, we felt it was important to talk about the grants that we received, that our grants were, we have allocation to, for example, the Title I grant, the Title II eight grant, the Title IV grant, ITA one sixteen, one eleven and one sixteen, the universal three K grant, and the extended day pay spread. Those are all grants that are part of the role of this person, they have a role, that individual has a role in those particular grants, and you can see the grand total that we're talking about, and that's grants before we're required, before we're talking about competitive grants. So, we think that that's an important piece to share with everybody tonight. At this point, does anybody have a question for me, or can I be quiet?
They'll be active, I'm sorry, they'll be active making applications in competitive grants that come up that we will follow.
Yes, so, and we also discussed last time, too, that if the board makes the decision to continue with that position next year, we will have a, a different type of report or reporting process, so the board knows what ones we've applied for, and what grants we did or did not get.
Okay, thank you.
So, when we look at our proposed revenue and expenditure balance with our enhancements, the gap between revenues and expenditures increased to be almost nineteen thousand dollars. And now, Mr. Storm's going to our budget reductions.
So, we looked at our, what areas we, again, I think it's really important to say that there's no, no more, a more part in our budget that our administrators feel we should be getting rid of, but we also need to take into consideration, we can't have it all, and we need to be very mindful of the spending that we're doing. So, we looked at first positions that could be filled through attrition, and then we also looked at positions where someone may be taking a leave, so those are all taken into consideration here. So, we, a recommendation is to cut one speech therapist, through attrition, a heart teacher through attrition, a school psychologist as a downsized, a music teacher, six downsized, and then public relations specialist at point four downsized, social studies teacher downsized, elementary teacher downsized, and reduction of one section of fifth grade, elementary teacher downsized, one section of sixth grade, and a copy clerk downsized. We also looked at supplies and materials, an overall five percent reduction in supplies and materials across the district, Chromebook replacement parts, a reduction of by twenty percent, the employee assistant program through, through, DHS, they're eliminating that program. We, after our last meeting, we had a conversation, because I know that the board had a lot of questions about the grants coordinator, and the role of the grant coordinator, and whether it's worth us having him or not, or if it's having him. And after our meeting, I ended up in a conversation with high school administration, we do have a teacher in the high school who is going to take a leave of absence next year, and English is other than, language is other than English, teacher, so are foreign language teachers, and after looking at the schedule, the, as everyone knows, those are classes that are done depending on each year, population of students that would be in there. This particular position, administration feels that for one year, we could hold back and not have that particular position this coming school year, and then we go back to it the following school year, which would help us, would help us also with grants coordination, because it gives us that gear to look at how that's working, and then make, weigh the difference in the two, and if it's not working, then we'll be able to have that conversation.
So, factoring in the proposed revenue, and the proposed budget enhancements, as well as the reductions of the general fund, leaves a revenue gap of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The following grant, the following reductions reflect reductions from COVID- nineteen relief grants, these reductions have no impact on the general fund, however, it is important to be transparent with these positions, as the funding expires on September thirty of twenty twenty-four, so these funds cannot sustain positions for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So, these positions are positions we wish we still had plenty of money to cover, and still maintain. So, in the elementary school, the reduction of one section of kindergarten, elementary school, the reduction of one section of first grade, special education, one special education teacher, science, one science teacher, and then teaching assistants for the reflection rooms across the campus, three of them, a special education teaching assistant, one of them, a graduation coach, one, and a technology teaching assistant, one. Kind of floating yours. We also are reducing an occupational therapist support, an A that works there, and an English language learner support as well, and then BHSN crisis intervention specialists that we had, and those are the areas that we are recommending as reductions.
So, balancing revenues and expenditures, the revised general fund expenditure budget with enhancements and reductions is fifty-four million, one hundred thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which represents a two point one-two percent increase over the twenty-three, twenty-four dollar budget. This would require the Board of Education to authorize an additional fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars of appropriated fund balance, for a total of two million, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars of appropriated fund balance under the current foundation aid assumption. It is also important to highlight that this appropriated fund balance includes a one-time expenditure of a hundred and ten thousand dollars that will be used to support the Murphy's capital project in the intermediate kitchen. A typical capital outlet project is a hundred thousand dollars, this project is two hundred and ten thousand dollars, with the expectation that in future years, the capital outlet project will reduce to a hundred thousand again. And there's a brief history of the appropriated fund balance in past budget years. And this is just a summary chart of our district's appropriated fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The district's total fund balance is just shy of ten million dollars, or at least over ten million dollars, with unassigned fund balance making up a vast one of forty-nine percent of the total fund balance. So, when we, when we're talking approval of budget enhancements and reductions, does the Board of Education approve the budget enhancements and reductions as presented? Therefore, authorizing an additional fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars in appropriated fund balance for a balanced twenty-four, twenty-five budget of fifty-four million, one hundred thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Questions, discussion?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate you guys really working back to the table and trying to find and meet our requirements from last night. I think you dug in the vast and smart, and I really appreciate everybody's effort, administration in the district office table, it's a lot, it's all, it's down. Absolutely, I mean, going through that.
I have a motion for this to be effective discussion on A B, and now, our proposition number one to establish fifty-four thousand, one hundred, fifty-four million, one hundred thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollar amount that the board will issue, shall be reported by the multiple voters of the district at the annual meeting on the twenty-first. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Graves? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Property tax report card, can we do that tonight, because of all the differences, it's still okay? Scott and I talked earlier, and it was supposed to cut, you know, if anybody does.
So, we, we drop the budget to.
Okay, please, okay, okay, good. Okay, good, okay, okay, good. Okay. Okay, any discussion questions on that report card?
Just, I'm quite ready to base your report card. Looking at the general fund balances in our report card shared by all the labor districts, they all carved out, it seemed like newer areas of the general fund. Like, it just, I was curious when reporting, like, Sable, they carved out one area of the IRS system. There's the one area that wasn't on. I think they were reporting like they were asking about other categories. Beakbentown, like sixteen, you know, portion of that. So I'm just curious, like, what is, what is the reasoning of that, if I look at that, that why different districts are reporting this in this?
We report our, there's a, basically a rule one for what should be reported. So it's potential that Beakbentown has other reserves that needs to be reported that Peru doesn't have. And it's possible that Sable doesn't have reserves that Peru does have.
So following that thought, I know that we, looking at previous reports, have a lower total fund balance, but a higher unreserved portion of our balance if you're a dean of. Is this related to, we need to carve out more areas of our general fund to be reserved for issues?
So we are actively trying to fund capital reserve. As you recall, at the end of the twenty-three twenty-four school year, we do assign a fifty thousand dollars, unassigned fund balance into capital reserve with the goal of continuing to build that reserve as we prepare for a capital project. We have employee, ability reserve, we have employees retirement system reserve as well.
So you feel like our supply and opportunities, the farthest right now is to.
Yes, and I think the capital reserve is a priority at this time as we focus on a future project.
Any other questions, discussion? Motion to adopt the twenty-four twenty-five property tax report card?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mr. Peters, all favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion carried. Um, any, but a sign of a comment? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters. Second, Mrs. Mitchell, all favor?
Aye.
Motion forward. Thank you.